When they get quiet, you get scared.
Yep.
The October one, two thousand and eighteen board meeting has been called to order. I'm gonna ask at this time, we have a motion to come out of recess.
Can I move?
Take it.
All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Henderson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have Dr. uh Louis, who will present our accountability results for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, each year, Wayne County Public Schools participate in a variety of testing and accountability measures, starting with third grade and progressing through high school. This year's accountability model is slightly different than the models uh we've been using in years past due to new federal and state legislation related to school accountability. This presentation tonight is intended to provide you with a basic overview of our district's accountability results for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year and to help clarify some of the changes to the accountability model. I always start by clarifying the difference between tests and accountability. Tests are those things we give children at the end of the year to find out whether or not they have mastered the content that we've attempted to teach them over the course of the year. Accountability programs are programs that use those test scores to try to answer research questions such as, did students make sufficient progress this year as a collective, as a school-wide group, as a grade-level group, as a classroom set? Uh, did students make acceptable growth? What is the status of our overall school? So while tests are independent piece, uh, provide us with independent pieces of information, accountability programs try to make sense of those thousands upon thousands of test scores that we get back. Um, in the past, our state and federal accountability models have been quite different from each other. Starting this year, the two are more aligned than they've ever been before. Both the state and federal accountability programs look at student performance, performance and EVOs growth. And both the state and federal accountability models report that out by school using the school performance grade, letter uh grade system, A through F. In that A through F model, student performance counts for eighty percent of the school's overall score and student growth counts for twenty percent. In addition, this year, the federal government uh began reporting uh using the ESSA model, the every, every student succeeds act model. Uh, there were new goals set for all subgroups at all schools that went into effect this year. Student participation in standardized testing is also reported. The biggest difference that I would say between the two is that while the state and federal accountability model with the A through F system is designed to give parents an overview of how their school as a whole is doing, the additional federal reporting with the subgroup goals is really for reporting purposes only, unless your school has been identified as a school that has major gaps between one subgroup and another. Uh, it's my understanding from our regional accountability coordinator that far more focus will be placed on the A through F letter grades and the associated tests that go with it than will be placed on the federal goals that will be reported. I'll get into that just a little bit. There are two labels that uh may start to impact our schools. One is called comprehensive support school and the other is gonna be a targeted support school. Those are also in association with the new ESSA model. To this point, we have not gotten any list of what schools may or may not be on that from Wayne County. The State Board of Education meets later this week and it's my understanding that list will be presented to them for the first time this week. So if any of that comes up, we'll be sure to let you know. We'll start with student performance scores. Student performance scores are reported two different ways. Uh, these report proficiency on grade level assessments given in grades three through eight, plus at the high school level, math one, biology and English two. They also report college and career readiness. The difference between those two is that college and career readiness is a higher standard. You must score a level four or five to be deemed college career ready. You must score a level three, four or five to be uh scored grade level proficient. That is still a difference between uh the state and federal models. The state model with the A through F rating system uses grade level proficiency for its calculations. The school performance goals that the federal government will report out uh zero in on college and career ready still. So that'll be something to be on the lookout for. One new thing for this year that I've highlighted in red, starting this year, each student subgroup that has at least thirty students in it at a school will receive its own growth score and its own school performance grade. In the past, this applied to schools only. For example, uh, an individual elementary school might have gotten a letter grade of C based on its performance, so its proficiency. But each individual subgroup would not have. Now they're gonna break it down subgroup by subgroup and say, white students performed at this level, black students performed at this level, students with disabilities performed at this level. If there are thirty in the subgroup, they're gonna receive their own individual letter grade with their own performance rating and their own growth status. So that's a new extended level of reporting that we will have um this year. It's important to note that we will not receive grades like that as a district. In other words, they will not report on Wayne County Public Schools, students with disability. They will only take it school by school by school. Uh, those came out uh while we were on our uh unscheduled fall break a couple of weeks ago. I'm working on compiling those into a report that you'll be able to view school by school. I do not have that for you tonight. School achievement indicators changed slightly. The indicators that you see in black text are indicators that we've been using for many, many years. EOG and EOC, reading and math, and EOG science at the elementary and middle school levels, uh, reading, math and biology at the high school levels, as well as math course rigor and four-year cohort graduation rate. The two indicators that changed the most this year, where we are are now judged on our English language learner's student progress and we receive a, a rating of what percentage of our English learners are making uh sufficient progress toward exiting the English learner program. All right? This is not based on whether or not they passed the standardized reading test or the standardized math test. Upon entry into school, an English language learner's skills are assessed and based on their score on that initial placement, there is a scale that determines how many years of, of English language instruction it should take them to exit that program. This English language student progress model looks at what percentage of our students meet their annual target goal on that same assessment of English language. Okay, so that's a little bit different. The other one that you see up here is new, it's AWA. It is a combination of ACT scores and ACT work keys scores. We've used both of those measures in the past, but never in combination with each other. When we get to that part of the presentation, I'll explain how they're being used together now to report out for our high schools. For our achievement, nine of the seventeen areas where we administer EOC or EOG tests made uh progress. Uh, they increased the percentage of students deemed on grade level. And eleven of the seventeen increased the percentage of students deemed college and career ready. Compared to the previous school year, um, nine is, nine of seventeen is up from eight of seventeen a year ago. And the eleven of seventeen increase in college and career readiness is up from only four the previous year. Thought that was pretty good. Our EOG and EOC performance composite, grade level proficiency currently stands at forty-six point one. The state stands at fifty-eight point eight. If you notice the change column, uh, we dropped slightly, two tenths of a percentage point. The state dropped a little bit more, four tenths of a percentage point. All in all, I think what I would categorize this is that scores remain largely unchanged. I'm not sure two tenths of a point, four tenths of a point is a major shift in either direction. The same is true when I look at college and career readiness. We managed to increase by two tenths of a point. The state was unchanged, but again, two tenths of a point, I would classify that as, as largely unchanged. When you look at our trends, you'll see that our trend is basically the same as the state trend. Uh, both the district and the state made a significant jump five years ago when they added the level three. There was a new level added at that time. Several of you uh are nodding, you remember when they did that or you remember that from, from uh presentations past. And you'll see that really over the last four years since then, there really hasn't been much progress at the state or local level. We're all kind of holding our own, but I don't think anybody is really taking significant strides on EOG composite trends. Think the same could be said for EOC composite trends. You see the big jump five years ago when the level, new level three was added and then a little bit of a, a little bit of an up and down at the state and local level since then. Uh, generally speaking, we have made about the same level of progress that the state has, but we have not really closed much of the gap. Uh, EOC might be the exception to that. We're a little bit closer to them now than we were a few years ago. There are other achievement levels that are reported and are used for accountability purposes. One of the ones that gets a lot of attention is cohort graduation rate. Uh, I always take this opportunity to help remind people that cohort graduation rate and dropout rate are not comparable to each other. Okay, so for example, if a school's graduation rate is eighty-five percent, that does not mean that they had a fifteen percent dropout rate. They're totally different measures, all right? Graduation rate takes a look at one cohort of students and tracks them for four years. And the question is, if you started high school four years ago, did you graduate on time four years later? In Wayne County, the answer to that typically is yes. I'll show you the numbers in just a little bit. I also wanna point out to you uh who is classified as a non-graduate. A student may still graduate from high school, but if he takes longer than four years, the school doesn't get credit for him in this graduation rate. Students with disabilities who earn a certificate of attendance through some sort of a life skills program do not count. In fact, they count against the school regardless of whether or not that student met their IEP goals, regardless of whether or not that student made uh adequate progress based on their personal abilities, they count against the school. Recently, they started allowing us to count students who transferred to Wayne Community and graduated on time from Wayne Community with a high school diploma. Uh, typically, we may have five or fewer per year that do that. Generally speaking, the students that leave us to go to Wayne Community are students who are behind and they see that as a way of catching back up a little bit, but they, they typically don't. Uh, students who earn a GED count against us in this. Students who move out of state and cannot be located count against us in this. Uh, and then, you know, of course, students who graduate late. Our four-year cohort graduation rate dropped slightly to eighty-two point five percent. North Carolina's dropped slightly to eighty-six point three percent. Uh, generally speaking, um, this is still a good year for Wayne County. Out of the thirteen years we've been measuring graduation rate this way, this is the fourth highest total that we've ever posted. Um, so as you look at the trend line, I don't have all the numbers on there, but you can generally see Wayne County is the blue line. Generally, when we have one year that is a setback, we tend to bounce back over the next year or two. Wouldn't surprise me to see that again. One thing that I would point out is since we started measuring cohort graduation rate this way uh in the two thousand five, six school year, Wayne County's progress has been greater than the progress of the state overall. We have increased our graduation rate by twenty-one percentage points over that time. The state has increased by eighteen point two. Okay? Dropout rate is different than graduation rate. Graduation rate looks at one group of students over four years' time. Dropout rate looks at four years' worth of kids in one year. They look at all of our kids nine through twelve and say, what percentage of them left school last year? Not transferred to another school or whatever, but truly dropped out. That's why those two measures are not comparable. It tracks students in grades nine through twelve from the beginning of one new school year to the beginning of the next, and so we just finished that up. Um, this is always reported one year after the fact. So the most recent figure I have for you on dropout rate will be the sixteen seventeen school year because they're currently calculating seventeen eight. North Carolina's rate um currently is two point three one. Ours is currently two point seven two and as you can see, we have effectively sort of closed that gap. Uh, the state rate has continually dropped, ours has continually dropped and that's due to the efforts of an awful lot of people, not only in our high schools, but in our elementary and middle schools well, as well. We always talk about uh student persistence. Student persistence is more than just a high school focus. It's a K-12 focus, a pre-K-12 focus. So student persistence, um, which is a measure of graduation and dropout rates, really remains steady statewide. Math course rigor is a term you've heard me use before, but I'll use it a little differently this year. In the past, math course rigor was the percentage of students, graduates, who had earned math three or higher at the high school level. The slight change that the accountability model put in place this year is that it's no longer graduates who earned. It is students in the senior level cohort who earned it. Okay? So because of that, we saw a slight decrease in Wayne County from about ninety-five percent down to about ninety-four percent. The state dropped from about ninety-four percent to ninety-two point nine percent. More students are included in the model and the ones who, who would not have counted against us previously, the non-graduates, now do count against us if they don't have that math three credit in their, in their, uh, in their transcript. So that's one slight change. Realistically, this should not affect us much, but it is a change, so I wanted to point it out. The ACT um scores are still being reported, but for accountability purposes, ACT scores alone are not figured into accountability anymore. ACT, all juniors across the state take the ACT and what they look at is the minimum composite score that the University of North Carolina system, okay? So all of the universities in the system, the UNC system, they require a minimum of seventeen. The state looks at ACT scores because they're a good predictor of college readiness, all right? So you want your percentage of students scoring high to be high. In Wayne County, forty-three point seven percent of our eleventh grade students earned at least that seventeen, which is the minimum standard to be admitted to a UNC system school. They earned that as juniors, I think it's important to point that out. Students are allowed to continue taking the ACT as seniors in an effort to improve their scores as they apply to colleges. In the state, the average is fifty-seven point nine percent. Both the state and the district saw a slight drop this past year. The state decreased was, decreased was, was nine tenths of one percentage point. Our decrease was two point three percentage points. ACT work keys is also another measure that we've been giving for a while. It is still being reported as a separate indicator, but it's not being used in accountability as a separate indicator, okay? In Wayne County, uh, last year, those seniors who were CTE concentrators passed the work keys at exam, uh, exams at a rate of eighty point five percent. Uh, that is a slight drop from our performance in years past, but it still ranks sixth out of a hundred and fifteen school districts statewide, which I think is uh a compliment to our CTE program. If you'll notice, the state of North Carolina rate is only sixty-eight point three percent. This is an area where we excel. Uh, and the message here is clear, those students that take advantage of our CTE programs leave ready to go out and be uh workforce ready. That work keys assessment is a, is a measure of workforce readiness and it's not just given to kids. If you'll notice in the paper, uh, you'll see Wayne Community advertises that they give it to adults monthly, I think. Um, some of my CTE folks, if they're here, might wanna chime in on that, but it's, it's for students and adults alike. So to rank sixth out of a hundred and fifteen school districts, I think is a, a good accomplishment for our folks. Now I mentioned that ACT and ACT work keys are still reported separately, but they are not used in the accountability model separately anymore. They were replaced by a combined accountability measure called AWA, all right? AWA is ACT and work keys. Um, I don't know if they're calling it aggregated, I'm sure that last A stands for something, but it, it might, I, I wish they had said AWC 'cause it really is combined. And the bottom line is, if a student passed one or the other, then they counted in the school's favor on that accountability measure, okay? Uh, so for this year, the percentage of twelfth grade students who demonstrated proficiency either on the ACT or on the work keys test, the state's uh deemed that as demonstrating college and career readiness, the ACT on the college side, the work keys on the career side. Sixty-one point five percent of Wayne County seniors who were concentrators demonstrated that. Now that's the only rub on that. All students who take the ACT as juniors count in that measure. The only ones who can replace a low ACT score with a high work key score are those concentrators still. My hope is at some point, they will get to the point where they're administering work keys tests to all seniors statewide. We currently do all of our juniors, uh, work keys test all of our juniors through an association with Wayne Community College, but we are one of a very few school districts statewide that do that and they will not allow us to use uh those scores to replace our ACT scores unless those kids are concentrators. So I'm hoping that if they're gonna put that much weight on it in the accountability model, then they will change their minds about who they test with work keys. That was a pretty big change. Any questions on that one? That's a significant change. I mentioned English learner progress before, I may have covered that pretty well. The EL students who are making adequate progress toward exiting the program. This is another area where Wayne County compared very favorably to the state. Across North Carolina, the percentage of EL students that made sufficient progress was forty-four point nine percent. We were at forty-four point six percent. So our instruction of English language, uh, to English language learners for language acquisition uh seems to be going as well generally as is going across the state. I always mention NC final exams just because of the number of assessments we give that are NC final exams. NC final exams are summative assessments that are used right now in two ways. If you're a high school student, this counts as your final exam. It's twenty percent of your final grade, so it absolutely matters to you. If you are a teacher in any grade level that administers an NCFE, then your EVOs score is based on that. So it absolutely matters to you. Where it doesn't matter is in anybody's accountability model. We give thousands upon thousands of NC final exams where kids get scores and teachers get growth ratings, but neither the scores count on the proficiency side for the school nor in the growth calculations in EVOs. I wanna point that out because a lot of debate still goes on about how often we test our kids and whether or not we're testing them too much. That's really not the debate to be had. My question is, if we're gonna give these state-administered assessments, why are we not using them more? Why are we not counting them for something when we're trying to pass judgment on the school? Um, the biggest number of them you'll see, and I don't know if you can read those from where you're sitting or not, the vast majority of them are given at the high school level. And so at the high school level, when we talk about tests that count in their accountability model, we're talking about biology, English two and math one. And yet we give another twenty or so NC final exams where kids get scores and teachers get growth rating, but it doesn't show up in the accountability. Okay? I'd like to see the state change that a little bit. Generally speaking, NCFEs make up about thirty-five percent of all the tests we give. Let's talk about student growth just a minute. We've talked about student proficiency a lot, whether or not the child passed the test by whatever standard you wanna set, college and career ready or grade level proficiency, did the child pass the test? Now we wanna try to answer the question, did the student grow? Did the student make a year's worth of progress having spent a year's worth of school with us, all right? Uh, I know many of us value growth as a good indicator of whether or not a school uh is doing what they can to meet the needs of their students, all right? EVOs uses what are called normal curve equivalencies to try to place students on a scale and then it compares their own performance to their prior performance. It doesn't compare them to a standard pass or fail. It says, how did I do this year relative to my peers compared to how I've been doing relative to my peers? It assumes that all students are moving forward. The question is, am I moving forward as much as everybody else is, okay? EVOs will not report to us an individual student's growth score. They won't tell us, you met expected growth, you did not meet expected growth. But what they will do is start looking at groups of students. Your class of thirty-five math students, your class of twenty-five science students. They'll even look across your, if you're a teacher, your entire schedule. If you taught ninety math students over the course of a middle school day or a high school gr, uh, day, they'll lump them all together into a class and make some determinations. They'll also do that at the school level, okay? Did our science students at grade eight at this school make an acceptable growth rating, okay? And so forth. They'll throw everybody there, that's where your student, um, your student growth score comes from. You're either going to fall uh in the, in the range of not met, met or exceeded. Met is just that. This group of students made the level of progress we should expect of them, okay? Not met is just what it sounds like. They should've made more progress. This group of students should have made more progress or did not make as much progress as we thought they would. And then exceeded, of course, is these students outperformed what we expected from them. In two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, sixty-five point five percent of WCPS schools met or exceeded state growth standards. That's up from only fifty-seven percent the year before. Six schools exceeded growth, thirteen met and ten schools did not meet expected growth standards. I think it's interesting to note that out of the ten that did not meet expected growth standards, six of the ten improved their growth conversion over the year before. So please don't interpret that ten as no progress at all. It just wasn't enough to get them up to the met range, okay? Now let's talk about school performance grades. We're all familiar with the A through F grading system, I think, by now. We know that the ranges are fifteen-point ranges and that in order to get an A, you must score an eighty-five, a composite of eighty-five or above, B seventy to eighty-four and so forth. This past spring, the General Assembly took action that uh said that they would leave these fifteen-point grade ranges in place through at least the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. In the past, there's been discussion, I think these were originally intended to be ten-point ranges. I think they are content to leave them at fifteen right now. Just kind of a visual, that the school achievement score, which is made up of all those proficiencies, your grade level proficiencies, did you pass or fail a given test or meet a standard? Those count for eighty percent. Student growth counts for twenty percent. That student, uh, school achievement score comes from the following, the test scores of EOC and EOG tests, graduation rate, math course rigor, AWA and EL progress. There's a look at those indicators again. You can see that more indicators are used at the high school level than at elementary and middle school. For growth, for this uh letter grade system, one important note that impacted some of our high schools is that when they're determining growth at the high school level, they only look at the reading scores and the math scores and it's only math one and English two. Later, we're gonna start to add math three, but only for those students who took math one in the eighth grade and we'll get into that, that's gonna phase in and we're not quite there yet. The big change over last year at the high school level is that biology scores no longer count in the growth model. They absolutely count towards your proficiency, but they do not count toward your growth. Um, we had two or three of our traditional high schools that made great strides in biology and while it did help them on their proficiency, it did not contribute to their growth score, which is a little bit of a shame in my eyes.
Dr. Louis, can you explain why that was done?
Yes, um, well, I can tell you the explanation I can, I was given. The federal government looks primarily at two sets of indicators. They look at academic indicators and then there's a category called other indicators. On the academic side, it's my understanding that reading and math were non-negotiable and then if we were going to use things like cohort graduation rate and such, we could not choose to use biology as a growth indicator for reading and math at the high school level. It still counts, science still counts in the growth for elementary and middle schools. But they were saying that because of, we had chosen so many other indicators like graduation rate, the AWA, EL progress, that they were no longer going to allow us to use biology. I don't agree with it, but that's the explanation I got.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? All right. As we look at growth conversion, i- if, if I were to report out to you what a school's growth index is, you might get a number like a two point five one or a one point three zero. When the state looks at using that as twenty percent of a student's letter grade, they have to convert it to a hundred-point scale so that they can sort of average it in with the proficiency scores because those are reported out as percentages, pass or fail, okay? So I wanna show you a couple of things about the, the um growth conversions. The first set of numbers you see that I show up here are growth index values. This is what this EVOs gives the state. You're somewhere on a number line, probably between negative ten and positive ten. I have seen numbers outside of that. They're pretty rare, pretty rare to be so low as to get below negative ten, pretty rare to be so high as to be above positive. Pretty rare to be so low as to get below negative ten. Pretty rare to be so high as to be above positive ten. Okay? Those are the categories you can fall into. If you're somewhere between negative two and positive two, you are deemed to have met expected growth. That's that yellow range you see on the chart. If your growth conversion is positive two or higher, you are said to have exceeded, uh, expected growth. And if your growth index is less than negative two, you are said to have not met expected growth. So when they convert that over to a hundred point scale, I'll show you that along that bottom set of numbers. You can see it goes all the way down to fifty. And then it, you, somewhere between, uh, negative ten and negative four, you can work your way up to a sixty, then to a seventy, to an eighty, to an eighty-five, and ninety, a hundred. Okay? The thing that I wanna point out to you is this. I want you to notice the difference in how far you drop on your way down compared with how far you go up on your way up. If my growth conversion drops from a, or, or drops from a zero to a negative two, then I lose ten full points on my converted score. If I raise from zero to positive two, I only go up by five points on my converted score. The takeaway is this. Schools are punished more for not making expected growth than they are rewarded for exceeding it. Does that make a little bit of sense? If you're somewhere in that, in that negative range, you're losing ground faster than those in the positive range are gaining ground. Okay? All right. I always try to point that out. And again, eighty percent of this is achievement anyway, twenty percent is growth. This year, on our school performance grades in Wayne County, we reported one A, two Bs, fifteen Cs, eight Ds, and four Fs. I put four up there with an asterisk because one of those technically is North Drive Elementary School. Even though they didn't give a single end of grade test because they only serve kids in grade two, the state looks at the school that they feed and awards them the letter grade that that school earned. In this case, North Drive feeds Carver Heights. Carver Heights' score, numbers, whatever, are projected onto North Drive. Now, there are no consequences for North Drive on that. They're not gonna be named a low performing school, but for reporting purposes, they will be reported as an F, even though they didn't give any of that. Now, for comparison purposes, if you wanna see how this compares to last year, uh, this year, one A compared to two last year. This year, two Bs compared to zero last year. So if you wanna look at As and Bs combined, this year there were three, last year only two. Uh, the school that managed to work its way up to a B was Rosewood High School. Uh, they've been kinda on the cusp of it for a couple of years and finally managed to go over the hump, so we're happy for them. Uh, fifteen Cs, that's the same number of Cs as last year. Eight Ds compared to nine last year, so, uh, one fewer D than last year. I think it's important to note that two schools worked their way from D to C. That is Southern Wayne High School and Spring Creek Elementary School, which means they come off the low performing schools list. So very happy for them. Um, in addition to schools that did not change letter grades, just like I, I talked to you about the ten who didn't meet expected growth and six of the ten had improved their score within that range. There were thirteen additional schools that improved their school performance scores, but because it did not make it to that next range up, you really don't notice that if all you look at is the list. So, um, those schools were Brogdon Middle, Charlesby Acock High, Dillard Middle, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Eastern Wayne High, Eastern Wayne Middle, Goldsboro High, Grantham Elementary, Grantham Middle, Greenwood Middle, Northwest Elementary, Rosewood Elementary, and Tommy's Road Elementary. That's thirteen who improved their scores within their current range. That compares with only eight that managed to do it the year prior. So I thought that was a positive. Uh, there are four schools, again, you know, North Drive receives its score. Wayne Middle High Academy does not receive a rating in this category, nor does Edgewood or the School Street Early Learning Center. Uh, the School Street Early Learning Center is pre-K only, and so they're not associated with this. Wayne Middle High Academy, we talked earlier about their, uh, alternative accountability model that they're judged by. They received a rating this year of progressing, which is the higher of the three categories you can fall into. And Edgewood Community Developmental School received maintaining, which is that middle level that they're still maintaining their current, uh, performance. I thought it would be interesting, too, to take a look at the low performing schools. We, uh, last year, we entered the year with twelve schools on the low performing schools list. Eight of the twelve showed improvement in their school performance scores, including two of those eight, uh, I mentioned earlier that worked their way off the list. And one of the twelve maintained its level. I think that was Brogdon Primary, who just stayed exactly where they were. The eight who improved were Brogdon Middle, Dillard Middle, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Eastern Wayne Middle, Goldsboro High, Grantham Middle, Southern Wayne High, and Spring Creek Elementary. Uh, two of those schools come off the low performing list. There are three who showed slight declines, three of the twelve that showed cl- slight declines. Carver Elementary, Carver Heights Elementary, and Mount Olive Middle. Uh, and then it is likely that we will see Northeast Elementary School added to the low performing schools list this year. Uh, they are, uh, they now find themselves at the high end of the D range and did not meet expected growth. So I'm expecting them to be added. I think they were on the preliminary list. The State Board will likely take action later this week to add them. So our, overall, our number's gonna shrink likely from twelve to a letter. Uh, and then of the ten that are going back on the list, uh, again, uh, six of those ten, as I mentioned earlier, uh, made some progress this past year. Can I answer any questions for you? Yes, sir?
I've got one. Um, going back to your cohort graduation rate, um, the early middle college, the students that, that maybe go a fifth year or a piece of a year, are they counted as non-graduating?
No, sir. Because the early middle college and the School of Engineering both have permission from the state to offer their students the chance to come back for a fifth year, those are not counted against them. They will get reported out as a five-year cohort graduation rate, basically. And a lot of their students do choose to stay one more year because they're almost done with that associate's degree or, uh, they've got something else at the college they're doing. Because those schools, I think, are part of the new schools project, or they have a waiver of some sort, uh, those would not count against the early middle college or the School of Engineering.
Okay. I was a little bit concerned when you were reading that. Cause I know we do have students that do go or choose to go five years.
Well, and, and the state does report out a, um, a five-year cohort graduation rate for all of our schools. Specifically, it is higher than the four-year rate. Um, I just don't normally hit it on, hit on it in the accountability presentation because in the scheme of things, the state doesn't recognize it when they report it out for schools. You won't, you won't see the five-year one in a press release out of Raleigh, but they'll give us that rate to let us know of the students who are choosing to stay and finish even though they're behind, what kind of success are we having? And it's generally pretty good.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir?
Uh, Dr. Lewis, in part of your presentation, you indicated that there was an effort to break out performance information based on race, gender, uh, et cetera. What is the purpose for that?
The, it's part of the Every Student Succeeds Act. They say that there, if there are at least thirty students, that constitutes what we used to call a subgroup, okay?
I remember.
And, and they will report out on that. What they're gonna look at for some level of accountability is, what is the achievement gap between a school's subgroups versus the student body as a whole? And if those gaps are too large, that's gonna be a red flag for somebody that those schools need to be looking at closing the gaps there. One thing that, um, I would mention about the target goals that have been set by the federal government and the state of North Carolina for each subgroup. The subgroup goals that are set by school are designed to naturally close that gap over the next ten years anyway. So for example, if a group across the state is already performing up here and another group's performing down here, then the state is not gonna necessarily expect the lower group to catch the higher group in ten years, but the pace should be faster. Both groups should be improving, but the group that's currently performing a little lower is expected to perform or, or to outpace that other group in an effort to, to start to catch, close that gap.
And as a, just a quick follow-up on that. In our schools that lack numerous subgroups, how's that gonna look?
You, you won't have subgroups at that school. It'll, it'll be student body as a whole, and then any, any group that has at least thirty kids in it. Uh, so now, I'll say this. Even at schools where you don't have much racial diversity, for example, okay, I'll talk about Carver Heights or Goldsboro High, Dillard Middle. You're still gonna report out on multiple subgroups because you're gonna have a students with disabilities subgroup. You're gonna have an economically disadvantaged subgroup. You're gonna, you may have, uh, enough students at those schools to have the, um, two or more races subgroup or a Hispanic subgroup. So you may be surprised at how many they do have, because it only takes thirty students school-wide to make up that subgroup. And again, I'm working on pulling that information together now. The reports became available over the break, uh, the unscheduled break. And so I've got those reports printed out, ready to send to the schools. Then what I wanna do is aggregate it out so that the, you guys can see, you know, how many goals each school had, for example, and how many they met, which ones they met, which ones they didn't.
Uh, Mr. Prisian?
Thank you, yes, ma'am. Dr. Lewis, with, with, um, no child left behind, we had ten subgroups or a possibility of ten subgroups.
Same.
How many subgroups do you have?
I, I believe it's tens, dude.
Tens, yeah.
I believe you have the all subgroup, which is all students aggregated together, and then, um, several different ethnic and, um, racial subgroups. And then the others that are not connected to race or ethnicity are students with disabilities and, um, economically disadvantaged.
Right.
There was a time where the state was reporting out AIG as a subgroup. The feds never recognized it, but the state was reporting it. I believe the state is gonna continue to report it, but because the feds don't recognize it, it won't count in anybody's goal totals. So for example, if we find out that this school met forty-five percent of its target goals, regardless of state or federal, uh, AIG would not count. Prior years, we would've reported state goals and federal goals, and the main difference was the AIG subgroup.
Hello. Uh, at one time, we had two schools that virtually mirrored each other, but one student caused a, uh, caused just one student
Yep.
caused the whole school to fail.
Yep.
Versus the other, other one, because the other one had twenty-nine and didn't have that, that subgroup. And the other one had thirty in that subgroup, so they were counted. It caused the whole school to fail.
You're referring back to the days when schools either met adequate yearly progress or they didn't.
Right.
And it didn't matter if a school like Spring Creek High used to be notorious for having thirty and thirty-five goals to meet because their population was so diverse, okay? And they would come in and they'd meet eighty-five or ninety percent of their goals, but the feds would look at them and say, your school didn't make adequate yearly progress. Meanwhile, a school over here with not a very diverse population and not nearly as many goals to meet might have met seven out of seven. Good job. Your school made adequate yearly progress. The feds, I think, have recognized the error in that and have gotten away from it. That's why I don't think they're reporting out whether or not schools met a certain status or didn't meet a certain status anymore.
But they're still using the same classification basically for the subgroups.
Same classifications. The number has dropped from forty to thirty. Uh, it, it actually did that several years ago, but in the days you're talking about where it was AYP and it was all or nothing, forty, it took forty to seven.
Well, that actually, that actually varied from state to state, too, cause the states were not measured by the same yardstick. Texas had a hundred and twenty-five students in the subgroup, where we had forty in North Carolina, which was very unfair.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain to me again about the, uh, math three rigor?
Yes.
Uh, if you took a math three course, if you took a math three course, I got it on my computer, I mean, yeah. If you took a math three course in, uh, as a junior, does it count in that twelfth grade cohort?
Yes. All it asks is, by the time you graduated from, well, I take that back. It used to ask, when you graduated from high school, did you have math three credit or higher? And if the answer was yes, good job. Now, that was almost a gimme, because you just about can't graduate from high school without making it through math three. There are some very, very limited circumstances where a student might be able to substitute in. Uh, there, there are certain business math classes that if you can demonstrate the need to substitute, you can do it. Principals are discouraged from doing that. Now the question is not when you graduated, it's by the time you finished twelfth grade. Okay? So if I'm a student who was a twelfth grader this past year, doesn't matter whether or not I graduated, by the end of the year had I earned math three credits. So go back to those kids that sometimes come back to us for a fifth year. You know, they will count against us on that. And that's why the percentage statewide dropped a little bit. And our, ours dropped from about ninety-five to about ninety-four. The state dropped from about ninety-four to about ninety-two point nine, ninety-three. So it wasn't a big impact, but it was, you know, slight distinction.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes, sir?
Um, I think it's about a year ago, we changed our grading on to a ten-point grade. Did that affect these numbers in any way?
No, sir. The grading scale that we use to assign classroom grades, we grade tests, we give them a nine weeks' report card, that kind of thing, those are completely separate. These are purely on test scores.
Yeah. Well, you know, the year, over the years, they're, they're always changing the...
I will say this, that I, I, I misspeak when I say they're purely test scores, because that's not exactly true. Whether or not a student earned math three credit is a function not only of the test he took in math three, but also the, the entire grade he got for the class. So in that, in that case, it might have a bearing, because a student would have to only earn sixty now to earn credit. Uh, it might also play in, in graduation rate as a whole. How many years we've been on the ten-point scale now?
Just two.
Just, just two?
Two.
Okay. So I wouldn't have expected it to have a big impact on our graduation rate by now. I would think it would take a student at least three or four years on that scale to really see a difference. Um, but we'll see.
Dr. Lewis, of the ten that are identified in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, how many of them have been on the low performing list for more than two years?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you that I have that in my report, Mr. Henderson, uh, but I can certainly look it up for you and, and send it to you. Your question is, of the low, of the schools identified as low performing, how many years have each of them been on that list?
Right.
I'll find out.
It's on that map. It's on the map. It's on the map, because there's several that have been on for four years.
Anything else I can do for you?
No? All right. So are you, will you be able to generate to the board a list of the schools and the number of years that they've been on low performing?
I'll send that to the full board.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But you also, we have it on our maps? Does everybody have a copy of your maps? You might not have them with you tonight, but you got them in an email. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Lewis. At this time, we have a presentation, um, Innovative School Districts, Dr. Eric Hall. He comes to us from DPI, Department of Public Instruction.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. And, uh, as mentioned, my name is Eric Hall, and I have the privilege of serving our state as the Deputy State Superintendent of Innovation. Been in this role for about the last two months. Prior to that, I served as the founding superintendent for the North Carolina Innovative School District, which I'm here tonight to talk to you about a little bit. Um, as we go forward, I'll give you just a little bit of context. The ISD, which is what you're gonna hear me refer to this as throughout tonight's conversation, the ISD was established in law by the General Assembly in two thousand sixteen. In May of two thousand seventeen, I was hired by the State Board of Education to come in and service the founding superintendent to establish what is now the hundred and sixteenth school district in our state. You know, we have a hundred and fifteen LEAs across the state. In this case, as the one hundred and sixteenth district, our task is looking at, how do we come in, look at schools that have had a history of low performance? And based on criteria in the statute, which I'll go over in just a moment, are identified each year when the accountability results are released by the State Department. And from that accountability, you know, from those results, a list is generated of schools each year that qualify for this state-level intervention. When we started this work over a year ago, one of the things that was really important to us, and I believe to the State Board of Education and to our agency, was looking at, how do we create conditions to come in and partner with local communities, partner with districts, and come in for a period of five years to see what do we do together to create better outcomes in a particular school? In creating those conditions, this is under a structure that falls under the State Board of Education. So as the superintendent for the ISD, up until two weeks ago, and I'll introduce you briefly to Superintendent Allen, who just came on board. to Superintendent Allen, who just came on board as our second superintendent for the ISD, her role is to work directly with the State Board of Education and the state superintendent, much like a superintendent reports to its local LEA board. So they are the board for this school system. Under there, you'll see that there's sev- sorry, I got hiccups. Several partnerships that are involved. First thing that we do from a structural standpoint is you have the ISD, and we look at either bringing in an innovative school operator, which is someone that would be under contract with the State Board of Education to help us in turning around the school, or, under provisions that were permitted last year in the short session, the ISD can also serve as that operator. And we have multiple ways that we can look at what does an operator model look like in the ISD. And again, this is about managing a school under contract for, you know, the State Board of Education in this model. I will tell you, one of the questions that we get oftentimes, and the reason I like to show the structure upfront, is that the operator is tasked in statute with identifying a school leader, and at the same time, the teachers and staff that are in the school are employees of the ISD. So these are state employees, these are public education teachers. I like to kind of debunk some of that narrative upfront, because there's a lot of mixed opinions or perceptions about what does this mean? But our first school that we have right now, which is at Southside Ashville Elementary in Roland, which is in Robinson County, all the teachers and staff that are in that school are employees of the ISD and fall under the State Department, and in this case, under the State Board of Education. We also work closely with the local school system to do a few things. One is that we look at what are the, the right, you know, strategies we need to bring in? Do we, you know, look at child nutrition services continuing to be operated by the district? Do we look at other professional positions that may be in the school currently? How do we really design what the team needs to look like inside that school setting, some of which may be the ISD, some of which may be the local school system, and potentially an operator? That's why I do refer to it oftentimes as a partnership. Now, I will tell you, one of the things that comes up oftentimes early in discussion, and I do think it's important to point it out here at the beginning, is that you'll see that the governance for a school in the ISD, it shifts under the State Board of Education for a period of five years, and that is in statute. And I think that's important to point out, because that is one of the questions I oftentimes get, because when you talk about a partnership like this, again, there's a lot of individuals that are involved in making this a successful strategy. And we've seen that firsthand with our work down in Robinson County this past year. We work very closely with the superintendent, we work very closely with the school board, we have team members from the school system that are working in that school, we have, again, ISD team members that are in that school, and we have an operator that has brought in a curriculum and instructional program, as well as a school director, and together we are working to turn that particular school around over these next five years. Something else in statute that makes this model significantly different than others around the country is that we are tasked with looking at a total of five schools over the next three years. That's five schools statewide. So in some states, you will see these models come into play, where they might look at multiple schools in a particular district. Our legislation really prohibits us from looking at more than one school in a single LEA. So you might be in a district where you have multiple schools that qualify. But at the same time, if the ISD comes forward with a recommendation for selection, we could only select one school and present that one school to the State Board of Education. So it's not something where you could have multiple schools in a local system as part of the strategy. But part of that partnership model is looking at, when the ISD comes in and works with the local district, there's another component called an innovation zone, where additional flexibilities for the local district can be implemented in other low-performing schools in that system. And this is a little bit of an image that kind of helps to show what this looks like. So if you look at the one school, if it becomes a part of the ISD, it's a low-performing school that meets the criteria. Across the rest of the district, other low-performing schools can start to feed and create this zone. So if we were working with, you know, a school that was a K through three, there might be a feeder school that's a four and five. There's ways that you can build that zone out, so that you can build flexibilities across multiple schools. And at the same time, the state has put into statute grants of up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give a local district in this model, so they can hire a turnaround leader that could help support the turnaround of the schools within that zone. And I point that out, because again, we've got a couple of things that happen here. One is that we wanna see where we can impact as many schools as possible collectively in partnership with the local district. While our task is to look at how do we turn around one school, we also work locally with the school system to see what are some strategies that we can use across that zone and share practice on flexibility and things that could hopefully create systemic opportunities for students to improve outcomes and close some of the gaps that you heard previously in the discussion. When you take something like the ISD legislation, we all know that implementing legislation, especially something like this, it takes a considerable amount of time, and you've gotta really be able to look at, how do you put it into a systemic approach? We laid this out into six steps, and I'll run through these quickly, but the first one is the consideration phase. So knowing that we're engaged for five years, the very beginning of this process started a few weeks ago, when the accountability data was released. What happened at that point in time is that we introduced and we released a list of schools that qualify for the ISD. We're in that consideration phase. We're taking a look at the data, we're engaging in conversations with the, with the district, with people at DPI, and starting to really understand, okay, what do we need to understand about the context of a school, and what are some of those barriers? And that kind of feeds us right into that evaluation phase, where we start to evaluate those outcomes and look at trends over the past three years. The next phase would be the selection phase, which means we're really at the point, by the time we reach that, that phase of this process, of being able to go to the State Board and also provide communications to the local district about a recommendation that's gonna go forward for selection of a school to be a part of the ISD. Some of the timeframes that align with that, that part of the selection process is that by October fifteenth, we have to notify a local school system of our intent to bring a school forward for a recommendation at the November State Board of Education meeting. And so that gives you a little bit of a timing around where we're at in this process right now. Once we move past the selection phase, if the State Board approves the selection and transfer of a school, and a local board approves the transfer and selection of a school, then we move into engagement, where we really start to look at what does an MOU with the district, how do we look at an operator model, how do we start to design those pieces together so that we can look at what does the school look like over the next five years? By the time we've reached that engagement phase, we're moving directly into partnership, which means we have all agreements finalized in place, and that's where we are for those following four years. We are engaged together as partners, delivering the outcomes that we wanna see for the school. And at the same time, by the time we reach year five, that's where we look at transitioning the school out of the ISD and back under the local school system. So that just gives you a little bit of an idea about the different steps that are in this process, and how we engage and how we actually implement this law based on the statutory requirements. In the statute itself, it does list out what are the elements that qualifies a school for selection. First one is you're looking at schools that are in the lowest five percent of all schools in the state, based on the prior school year data. Next, you're gonna look at any school that has any parts of grades K through five. So here in North Carolina, we have multiple configurations. We have some schools that are K two, we have some schools that are K five, we have some that are pre-K through three, we have some that are five through eight. A lot of configurations, but any school that has any parts of those grade levels would qualify based on the way the statute is written. We also look over the past three years to see, did a school exceed growth in the prior three years? And they did not meet growth in those prior three years. So if that's the case during that three-year trend, that would also still allow a school to qualify for the ISD. And then the last bullet on here, at least as it relates to the requirements for qualifications, is looking at, did a school adopt one of the established reform models in statute? And that is something that, once it qualifies, it has to go to the State Board for approval as one of the reform models that we see in general statute. Those reform models include restart, turnaround, transformation, or the fourth option is school closure. We do have requirements in statute that go beyond just those requirements for selection. We also have to look at a mix of schools that are urban and rural. We also have to look at, again, to my point earlier, we cannot engage more than one school from a particular LEA. From that set of criteria, here are the list of schools that qualified and was released just a few weeks ago at our State Board of Education meeting. These fourteen schools, I would tell you, is a, is, it's a big difference from last year. We had forty-eight schools in our first year that qualified. This year, we have fourteen schools. From those fourteen schools, you can see that there's a mix, again, of urban and rural. And once we look at that list, we have to then continue to narrow. We have to look at, okay, from those fourteen, how do we start to look at which schools we're gonna ultimately really consider for potential identification and selection for the ISD? So going beyond that, we start to look at those fourteen schools, and we say, all those schools that had a D in the seventeen eighteen school year, we remove them from consideration. All schools that had an F but met growth, we took those off, because my hope would be, is if a school is starting to meet growth, we're seeing a trend in the right direction. All schools that have met academic growth in both fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen and had a D rating for those two years. Because what that tells us is that maybe the school had two years, we had one year that really took a turn, maybe something happened within the context. We try to really pay attention to what, what's going on during that three-year period. And so from that, after, you know, applying those additional factors, we got down to six schools right now that are under final consideration by the ISD for potential engagement with the ISD. You'll see that that includes Carver Heights Elementary, here in Wayne County, Gaston Middle in Northampton, Hillcrest Elementary, Elementary in Alamance Burlington, Williford Elementary in Nash Rocky Mount, and then our two urban schools, our Fairview Elementary in Guilford and Hall Woodward in Forsyth County. And so what we're doing right now at this point in time is we've been engaging with school district leaders, we've been doing site visits with the schools, we've got individuals at DPI that are going out and conducting what's called a comprehensive needs assessment, and that's about giving us kind of some qualitative information about what are some of the barriers that a school could be experiencing, um, and ultimately being able to take all that information together and work collectively with the district to help look at what is the best decisions we can make going forward, if we're gonna be making final recommendations here, really over the next, you know, several weeks, to the State Board of Education. This just gives you a little bit of a detailed view of what's happened over the last three years, specifically here in Wayne County with Carver Heights Elementary. We know that the school over the last three years has been rated as an F based on the state's accountability model. We've seen school performance scores that have been, you know, twenty, at a rate of twenty-nine, then thirty-one, then back down to a twenty-seven. Grade level proficiency at seventeen point seven, then twenty-five, then down to eighteen point four. Growth status, again, three years ago it had met growth, but for the past two years, it has not met growth. And then you can see the EVOs portion of where those EVOs scores kind of fall, and I appreciate the presentation earlier on EVOs and showing those ranges, because it helps to kind of give you a context of where the EVOs scores are right now for this particular school. As we look at the six schools collectively, and I show this, because I think this is a critical point to kind of really just engage in deeper conversation, as we continue to collaborate with the district in understanding, you know, what is it that's taking place currently, what is it that's gonna go on in the future, and where do we go with any potential discussions from this, from this evening forward, over the next couple of weeks? When we look at the six schools across the top, you'll see that grade level proficiency is the first, you know, the first row, and you'll see how Carver Heights Elementary, in this case for those six schools, compares to other, other schools that are under consideration. You'll see the same thing with the average school performance score, and how those scores compare, and then the three-year trend with school performance grades. It's important to understand, you know, for at least putting this out there, when we go back to the statute, there are criteria in the statute that talks about the number of schools that we have to select. It directs the State Board to have to select a total of five schools over the next few years. We have to have at least two schools that are part of the ISD for the nineteen twenty school year, and then the final five for the following school year. So I bring that to context, because as we're looking at these six schools, the data helps us to understand kind of what has happened over the last few years. We've been fortunate to start engaging with districts and trying to understand what is that's happening in the current year at a particular school, and try to get an understanding of what is it that is a, a plan or a set of strategies that are already underway at a school, so we can better understand, again, as we look at where we might engage, what is it that's already happening, and what is it that is gonna happen potentially going forward? As we proceed forward after tonight, we've done a few of the first steps. We've engaged with the district, we've had a chance to go and do a school visit, we've had a chance also to engage, not only with the superintendent, but tonight with you as a board, to be able to have this discussion about what is the ISD, what is its intention, and the ultimate intention is how do we come together to help turn around schools, particularly those that have been low-performing for too long? Other steps that we would have to consider, if we get to the point of thinking this is a school that's gonna be under final consideration and recommended for selection to the State Board, we would have to engage with county commissioners. And then the next step would be looking at, how do we have a public forum with parents and families in the local community to be able to get feedback about their goals for the school? What are the things that they wanna know about the ISD? What does this mean for them as parents? What would they come to expect as a parent for their child in the school? And also helping the larger community understand, what does this mean overall? And how does this partnership come together to do this work, again, over the next five years? So we have a short window of time. October fifteenth is when we have to submit our final recommendation, if we're gonna do that back to a local district, to make a district aware. And we've, again, we've engaged with each one of these districts up to this point, of those six, and have been involved so far in meeting with school leaders, district leaders, and now we're at the point of starting to reach out to school boards, and very quickly thereafter, those that we think are, you know, really under consideration for potential selection, we would engage with the county commissions. So this is a timeline, and I won't walk you through all of this, but we talked about the October fifteenth deadline, that we have to, you know, again, respond back to districts. We anticipate coming back at the November State Board meeting to enter a final recommendation for that selection, and then moving into the months of November, December, and throughout the rest of the year, working collectively with the local boards that would be engaged with us in this discussion, and the local districts, to see where we would go from there. Now, here's the part that gets to be a little bit of a challenge. And this is the part that I know creates a lot of, it creates a lot of hard discussion, and I, I think it's important to put it out here, because when you look at the legislation, if the State Board approves the recommendation of the selection of a school, a local district has until February first to look at a couple of different options. One is to look at transferring the school into the ISD for a period of five years. The only other option in the statute would be for the local school board to decide if they wanna close the school. And those are hard conversations, and I recognize that. That's why I like to make sure that we work very closely together throughout this process, to look at, how do we do what's in the best interest of students? And how do we work at this as a partnership? Anybody that knows me and the culture that we are trying to establish, I'm very much about engaging, because I think in the end, we all have the same values for kids. We wanna see kids do well, we wanna take care of our educators, we wanna take care of our leaders, and we wanna take care of our local community. And those are the same values that we have. And on behalf of the department, that's why I wanted to be here tonight, to kind of talk to you a little bit about this, because we have worked really hard this first year to really change the narrative, narrative about what does it mean to be a part of this type of strategy? Because you'll hear a lot of other terms out there, you'll, you'll hear takeover, you're gonna hear a lot of things that go out there into framing what the narrative could be. But we wanna work with this district, we wanna work with you as a board, to say, well, how do we create the right conditions for success as partners? And that doesn't mean that all conversations are gonna be easy. I recognize that. But I am here to serve, and I'm here to do what we can collectively together to help students achieve. And so I think on that point, I will pause for questions or any other information that you'd like for me to share.
Uh, Mr. Henderson, your hand up.
Yeah, I did have, I, I wanted to make sure I understood what he said, relative to the options that this board has. If our school was selected, then the only options available to us at that particular point then would be either to agree to go with the ISO or to close the school. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So in statute, it's pretty explicit that once the State Board approves the selection of a school, what that does then is trigger a response by the local district for the board to have a discussion. We would have multiple conversations at that point. You might need more information, there might just be, again, an opportunity for more dialogue to talk about what are the best options for you as a board, and for this district, and for the local community. But yes, sir, to your point in statute, those are the two options, the way it exists right now in the general statute that defines this law.
Can the local board appeal the decision of the, of the...
Now, we'll tell you, the statute is silent around appeal, so that would be something for another conversation.
Okay, question?
Okay, Mr. Smith?
You indicated that in Robinson County, the turnaround project is projected for five years?
Yes, sir.
The schools that are chosen for consideration, there's, did you say there was a three-year trend that was looked at?
Yes, sir. So what it is, it's the immediate year, the, the outcome data from, in this case, seventeen eighteen.
Okay.
We're looking at that particular data set, and that is what qualifies a school in statute. Now, there is a part of that criteria that looks at whether a school exceeded growth or did not meet growth in that three-year period. But then, once we get the list of schools that qualify, so you may recall the list that showed fourteen schools, we then apply a set of filters that looks at what's happened over the last three years for those schools, to then narrow down to the six that we have under consideration. schools, to then narrow down to the six that we have under consideration. So yes, sir, that it does capture it in that three-year trend with, again, did not meet or exceed growth in that three years, but then in the drill down, that's where we take a deeper dive into those three-year trends to see what's happening with the schools.
Okay, because, you know, going, kind of piggybacking on something that Mr. Henderson indicated, and the, as you say, the appeal issue is silent in the legislation. If there's a five, if, if ISD gets five years to turn a school around, but you're basi, you're judging the school on three years, see where I'm going with this, it's a little, it's a little not, the numbers don't add up to me, because, you know, it just seems like the school district should be given five years to turn a school around. You know, if you, if you guys get five, why doesn't the school district get five?
And if I can?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand board process, that I can make sure I respond correctly. But I think to your point, sir, what it comes down to is within the statute, it does have performance metrics that the ISD, in this case, an operator, has to meet during that first few years, and what they have to do to maintain a contract throughout that point in time. If we don't do certain things, and this is part of our accountability on how we manage an operator, or even manage ourselves back to the State Board, is how we have to publicly report how we're performing during those, during that time period. I think in addition to that, it's important to note that the accountability outcomes for the school, and in this case, if it's a school locally, it would no longer count under the local district's accountability, it would be under the state's ISD accountability. So this school would no longer show up in your district's accountability model during that five-year period.
And you indicated also that you look at K-five schools, schools with the K-five designation or those K-five grades. Carver Heights is three-five, and we do have a K-two school, but that school is not considered because it's not given, is there, is there any consideration for that school at all and with other, because it's not being given a grade?
So just like the Accountability Division at DPI, they produce this based on the accountability results, and so that's what generates the list ultimately based on those rules in statute. I think to your point, because we have multiple configurations, in this case, because of the accountability outcomes for the three through five that's at Carver Heights, that's what's generated this selection, or at least this identification at this point for potential
And last, last question. Are the indicators that you're using or that you presented are just the numerical indicators? And the other aggravating or mitigating factors, how have they, how do they weigh in that decision?
So they weigh in, you know, obviously, we take all that in consideration. The data tells us what the process has been or what the outcomes have been. What we try to look at is what is it the school's doing most currently, and what are the plans, what are the plans going forward? But we have to think, you know, through that quite a bit, because we're looking back at the past three years, and we're seeing a trend in some cases that shows a downward projection, and of course, that raises a concern for all of us. I appreciate the conversation you had just before I stood up around your own district's data. I think the questions I heard show a strong engagement from this board around how your schools are doing, and I appreciate that. But I think in this case, as we look at that, we do try to understand what is it that's currently happening in the school, and what are the aspirations, but we can't, we can't hope at this point. I think we're kind of beyond hope, we're saying, how do we engage? And how do we have a conversation about either something that's district-led for an intervention? Or something that's state-led? And we have to do that in the context of the six schools that we're considering right now, and see where do we think are the best conditions for success, and where's there a potential that we may have to engage more deeply through this strategy with the district.
And I said that was my last question, but it wasn't.
Okay, this one is your last question.
Okay, don't limit my questions.
But I was limiting because somebody else had their hand up.
Okay. At what point do we as board members, if at any point, get input? Is this it now?
I think this is one mechanism. I would tell you, throughout any process, I make myself available. I try to make sure that people can reach me, of course, our superintendent for the ISD. We're here to be partners. Again, we mean that. This is, this is tough work. I mean, we recognize that, we know that these are tough decisions, and these are tough conversations to have, both, I know, again, for our board, for a district, and it's tough conversations for the state. We do take our role very serious in this discussion, and so from that, we do try to make sure that we're extremely accessible, and that way, if you need to reach us, whether it's a one-on-one conversation, if you want to have us come back for a work session or a special session for a deeper discussion, we want to make ourselves available to you to make sure that you feel like you've got the best information possible, and understand within the context of what we're doing in the selection process, have that information that we're having to depend on to make the best recommendation we can back to the State Board.
Okay, Mrs. Strickland, and then Mr. Henderson, do you have another question? Okay.
Thank you both very much. You may have covered this, and somehow I missed it, but what happens at the end of five years? If the school is improved, not improved, stayed the same, where, what happens then?
There are a couple of different things within the statute itself. One is it does allow, if at the end of five years, the school has achieved a C or greater and is no longer a low-performing school, we would work with the local district, State Board, myself, the ISD, we would work to decide, okay, if everybody's really happy with the direction of the school, we could do at least an additional three years of engagement under that strategy. That's one option, but our benchmarks have to be achieved in order for that to happen. If the school is still doing well, and we agree at the end of five years, then we would start in year four to talk about the transition plan, so that we can transition the school back into the local district. Now, it doesn't talk about that four years and that final year being transitioned, that is an operational piece because it's silent in the statute, but any of us that know what it takes to effectively support schools and support educators, we need at least a year of transition time to kind of work collectively and see how do we help the educators transition back into the school system, the school leader, and all those pieces, and see what are the parts that have been effective, and does that create some opportunities for sharing good practices collectively with the district as a partner?
And if it doesn't improve at all?
If it doesn't improve at all, then we would actually come back to you before that time and have a different conversation where we would say, okay, if we're not doing this, then there's things in the statute that say it can be returned back under the local district sooner than that.
What, what did you just say? How did you finish it? I didn't understand what you said at the end of your statement.
If we are not...
If it doesn't, if you don't change the school, then what?
Then it could transition back under the district sooner than the five years. So it puts expectations on us as the state and with our operator to ensure that we are moving things in the direction that we are committing to do. And I think that is one of the advantages we have in this strategy, because we do take, again, school selection very seriously. If you look at other state models, you'll see large portfolios of these schools that are under state operations many times. Our state did not decide to go down that path. Our state said, okay, look at one school in a particular district, how do we help to support that school? While a district may look at other options for other low-performing schools to help turn them around. So I think to the question that was made, within that five years, if we do not hit certain benchmarks, then it would transition back under the local district.
So it could transfer back before the five years end? Okay, Mr. Henderson?
Yes, as you look at your data as it relates to how we are being evaluated now, do you use the same set of data to determine that?
Yes, sir.
So there's not a difference between how you rate us and how we're evaluated versus how we're currently being evaluated on this accountability model?
No, sir. So what it does is the data based on the statute is what defines that list, and then we narrow from that list. And there's, again, we try to engage, because this is a requirement in statute too, that we have these types of conversations so that we can understand what are some of the barriers that a school might be facing. So the criteria that gets us down to qualifying as an ISD school and then being under final consideration, those are all things that are very specific. Part of this is engaging in the conversation to see how do we collectively work together to see what's the best circumstance for a school that's on this list at this point in time.
And how, how would this affect the school improvement grants? For example, because Carver Heights School has been receiving school improvement grants for the last couple of years.
Yeah, so we would work very closely with USDAOE in this case to ensure, because we want to make sure that there's no lost resources to a school. That was something that was very specific last year, even in my first year, coming in last year when we started this, I actually said, okay, this is our first year starting up. We were only starting year two at that point of the SIG grants, and I did not want to see disruption of those funds until we had another year of opportunity to see what was happening with the trends in our schools that had SIG grants. So that's why we're here today, kind of having this conversation, and we would have to work closely with USDAOE to see how that would work, because there are some really unique elements, and when you talk about how this is a competitive grant for a school improvement grant, and while, while SIG has kind of gone away under ESSA, those that have a current SIG grant still have until the end of that grant to use those funds. But to answer your question, we would have to have a deep conversation with USDAOE.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Flowers?
Mine's in kind of an entirely different vein, but obviously, you're looking at Carver Heights. We have hired a demographer to consider the possibility in regards to redistrict, team drawing some district. Carver Heights in round numbers is operating at seventy-five percent capacity, is joining a district that's operating at a hundred and fifteen percent capacity. What you're doing, how would that play into what we're doing?
That's a good point, and I appreciate you asking that question, because I think it brings up a very critical part of the legislation, is that the school is intended, when a school becomes a part of the ISD, it's intended to serve the same attendance zone that's defined. So if a district in this case was going to adopt a different attendance zone, we would need to see how much of an adjustment that makes in that population at the school, and understand that and have a deeper conversation. And I think, not knowing the timeline that you're on and looking at that kind of study and information, we would hope if we move beyond this October fifteenth deadline, that we could be a partner in that conversation and understand those impacts.
So am I hearing you say that we would carry on with what we're doing, and you would work with how that attendance zone is what we ended up with?
And I think what we would want to do is make sure there's not a significant adjustment in the student population at the school, because the intention here obviously is to be able to address the needs for the students in this particular school.
Well, you understand what I'm saying, I told you the percentage, we need that capacity.
And you're talking about being able to place more students in?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a conversation we'd have to have a deeper discussion on, because...
Well, if you place more students in it out of a school that did have a passing grade, you might even affect what's going on here, is that not correct?
It's possible, but without knowing the extent of the data...
Is it too late?
Based on the statute right now and the qualifications and where we're at in the timeline for this current year, yes, sir.
So it's too late?
I, my perception would be yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I'm just curious, at, at what point in time would your group have looked at, I'm sure you've looked at our schools' years past, so my, my question is, I guess I'm trying to get a grasp on, you're going to, I mean, if you wind up, if this school, if our school winds up being one of the schools that, that you take over or whatever, for, I mean, hey, let's touch the elephant in the room, you know, I mean, it's, but it seems to me like you would be better served, and I don't want to say, I, I mean, I, I respect you, and I appreciate you coming and giving us the information, I know it's not an easy job, but at, at what point in time would, I, I just think it would have been, let me, let me start over, would it not have better served you at some point in time to come into Wayne County and sit down with the administration and said, look, you know, and maybe you have, and we know what's going on, and we know the trend and where it's been for the last five years, but at what, would you have come in and said, you know, this is what we're going, we, we think this will work there, and this is what we're going to suggest or put in place there? Would that not have been something you could have shared with the district leadership and let it come from a district level before it got to the point of you actually having to come in and, well, lack of better words, take the school over?
And I can appreciate the question and definitely the perspective and the way that you're asking it, but with this being something that was just implemented by law in two thousand and sixteen, and last year was the first year, and because it does get defined as an LEA for administrative purposes, our function is not necessarily on the school support side, those are other divisions within DPI that focus on the support and assistance and things like that to the LAAs across the state, you know, and that is a division that has been cut here recently as well. I mean, you may have seen that in this last round of budget cuts to the Department of Public Instruction, but historically, there has been a set of team members at DPI that would be engaged in some of that coaching and support and things like that.
So that's already been in place?
And I can't tell you specifically to what extent here. I think I would not want to, I would not want to answer that one because I don't have that context.
Right.
Our, our, our task is very specific on what we have to do in the statute, and that's where we end up having to come and have these types of, you know, tough conversations, but, but I can appreciate the point you're making.
Thank you.
One other question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If it becomes an ISO, then that means all hands off deck as far as this Wayne County School Board is concerned, is that school, is that correct?
Not necessarily. These are some other elements within the statute. So in the statute, it does talk about how there's a deduction at the state level in the ADM, for example, that comes back to the LA to continue transportation services by the local district. If a school is, and I'll use an example, in Robinson County, it is a community eligibility district, a hundred percent of the students in the district receive free lunch, they're continuing to build the national school lunch program, and they have their staff in there delivering the child nutrition services. We've contracted with the local district to keep their custodial staff in the school and continue to maintain the facility. So there are some things that we would tailor hand-in-hand with the local district to decide what's the best circumstance for that particular school.
Yes, sir.
Did I hear you right to say that the, the staffing at that school would actually no longer come under the board, but would come under you? And in that case, would the salaries be coming through us, and would the local supplements be coming through us, or would it be going, coming from you all?
So in this case, as an LEA, we would get the same per pupil allotment that you get an ADM from the state, minus an adjustment for some transportation funds that remain with the local district here. So once we get that portion, and then we would work to also be able to collect the local per pupil allotment from the county, and together with the federal funds, like an LEA, we would be responsible then for paying the staff and everybody at the school with those funds.
Yeah, what about the supplements?
In supplements, we can decide either to match, exceed, or adjust accordingly from the supplement, in this case.
Okay, that's very interesting.
All right, I would like to thank you very much for making the presentation before us.
Anything you need, again, please reach out. Contact information is on the last slide of the PowerPoint. Also, Superintendent, he has my contact information. Feel free to share my cell phone number, and let me know what I can do to be helpful. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, we had a lot of questions from this board in just a short amount of time period in just hearing about this. And he said he would make himself available in the future for more discussion.
For work session?
I think we all need to smoke this over, because we may all come up with a lot of other questions that we would like to ask about this.
And then as...
And, and at that point in time, if we've had a conversation with one another, and we feel, and the superintendent, that we feel like it would be warranted, I think that we would need to possibly have another discussion.
I do not have a problem with that, but what is our timeline for another discussion?
Do you want to hear it?
Yes, please.
Excellent question. So the timeline is very short with where we are. That is one of the things in statute that I've made very, very clear, that it puts us on a tight timeline, because we can't identify schools until the accountability data comes out in September, and by October fifteenth, we have to have everything complete to make a recommendation back. So we literally have the rest of this week and next week to really make final decisions, which would include those steps with engaging with the county commission and having a public forum for discussion, I think to the point that was made. Yes, sir, I think...
I, I think that after this meeting is broadcast, we're going to get a lot of questions from the public that we're not going to be able to answer by. So when would you, you have a public meeting?
I would anticipate if we, you know, as we go back in to brief, there's actually a CNA that's being conducted at the school over the next couple of days. Our plan would be to come back, I mean, I could work directly with the superintendent to see when is the best time, we could try to re-engage this week, if you'd like to have a deeper discussion, but I think sometime next week is probably the likelihood for a public forum, because we want to give adequate notice, make sure people have the information ahead of time, and also look at what is the most feasible location to have a public forum like that, so that it's convenient to the parents, it's convenient to the community, whether that's at the school, which is what we did do at Southside Ashpool, or another venue that's at least close to the local community. I think that's really important. I leave it as an open invitation, and we can, we'd be happy to follow your lead.
All right.
What, I just have one thing to say, because now, based on this timeline, you're supposed to be notifying us by October fifteenth if there's a selection.
Yes, that's what he said.
And we got, okay.
And the recommendation goes to the State Board, and they will, they will meet the November sixteenth.
Their decision would, I don't have the board date right in front of me, but if the State Board...
My superintendent gave me the board date of November sixteenth.
That's the final decision, yes, ma'am.
Final decision.
I would get you that date.
Okay.
Typically, we meet on the first Thursday. I will tell you, the October-November timeframe is a little bit interesting, because we have a board work group, a work session to go over our strategic plan the last two days of October, and so I believe this year, actually, it's November first. It's going to be a one-day meeting, because we're doing pre-work for the two days prior with the State Board of Education.
And November 1st is a Thursday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I appreciate it again, again, if we can be of service, questions, please reach out.
All right, thank you very much again, both of you.
Do you want to do the public comments?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do, Mr. Smith would be handling, I'd like to apologize to those who have been waiting to speak to us, but our general topics were a little bit heavy.
You ready?
Yes.
The Wayne County Board of Education requests to appear before the board. Wayne County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings, if you wish to appear before the board, please review the following procedures. Appearance request forms are available to the public at the receptionist desk in the lobby 30 minutes prior to the meeting, anyone wishing to speak must place their appearance request form along with any handouts in the basket located at the receptionist desk in the lobby, the basket will be collected 5:00 PM, and those who have an appearance request form in the basket will be allowed to speak. Public comments are scheduled to take place at 5:30 PM, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes, the chairman shall call time on any presentation that exceeds the three minute time limit, organizations or groups wishing to speak about a particular topic may be asked to reduce the time of each individual, or to use a spokesperson to share comments on behalf of their organization or group, substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker, no presentation shall include any complaint, criticism, or negative comments regarding the conduct or performance of identified school personnel, no presentation shall include information about a particular student which is privileged and confidential under state and federal privacy laws. Mr. Keith Copeland would like to speak on behalf of NAACP regarding segregation and student performance, Mr. Copeland, and he has given each one of us a handout, part of, it's part of his presentation.
Madam Chair, all of the board members, Dr. Dunsmore, I don't know whether or not I want to make the presentation now or not, because it seems like people have already made decisions, and my question to the board is, are you gonna fight for your schools, or are you gonna lay down and give up? Because there is more than one kind of data, you have qualitative data, and you have qualitative data. The other thing that I think that this group doesn't know about is that segregation plays a big part of what you're dealing with, the school that they have narrowed out is segregated by race, economics, and a whole host of other issues, most of those kids at that school have been through trauma, if you go back and you look at the ACEs study, and just pick out how many, I would be willing to bet you that over 80% of those students at that school, basically, you're dealing with trauma, and when you're gonna try to educate people who have experienced trauma, and we know that trauma does damage to children's brains, then you can, are at a disadvantage. The other thing I would want to point out is that they only went back three years, but if I recall, Carver Heights was, just made Carver Heights a new school three years, so really, they should have went back further, I agree with you, they really should have went back at least five years to see, and probably they would have seen some more improvement than what they saw. So, again, I'm gonna say to you, yeah, there was, there's some things here that I think you're gonna have to do, if you're gonna fight, you're gonna have to support your educators, because it's not always how it seems, you've got people over there fighting for those children's education, a lot of times, they have, they don't have really the support that they really need, so, and I'm not talking about just go by there every now and then, I mean, they need some regular kinds of support, those teachers, as a matter of fact, they need support, they're dealing with assaults, they're dealing with children cursing them out every day, where do they get support, does this board give them the support that they really need to do their jobs? There's some surrounding counties now that are doing what they call resilience education, and I'm not one that just say, join in to everything that comes up new, but I do know that these children, a lot of what you're experiencing, the reason why their grades aren't the way they are, is because of trauma.
Thank you very much, Mr. Copeland, we appreciate your comments. All right, we are at the point of approval of our agenda tonight, and are there any additions or deletions? I will say that we have one, we're going to revise the resolution for financial. Yeah, okay, thank you, for finan- financing terms, we are going to, we have a resolution that has been revised for approving financing terms, and I marked that H, and I think that Mrs. Strickland has an addition.
Yes, ma'am, I guess it would be letter I under Board Action, and I would like to add a discussion about changing our meeting times beginning at 3:30 instead of 3:00.
Now, this will go in, this goes under general, so also, no, yours goes under, but we do have an addition under general, we have D, we're gonna have an update on facilities impacted by the storm, and we will have E, an update on the Southern Wayne Gym. Okay, so we have a D and E under general, and we have an H and I under board approval, so we will begin with an update on facilities after the storm.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, whoops, I'm sorry.
Do we need to approve the agenda first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, we have a second, any discussion? If not, we're ready for the vote, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion, thank you, any opposed? Now, do we have the vote on the addition for general? Okay, we just all included all together, even though it comes under different sections. All right, then we're gonna have an update between Dr. Dunsmore and Ms. Dr. Harold.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, the good news is, we didn't get hit near as bad as some of our brothers and sisters out on the coast, that we did experience a fair amount of damage that we are working through, none of our buildings received any structural damage, we had a few windows blown in, some water damage, a couple of areas, and I'll let Dr. Harold follow up more with what our maintenance and operations department has been able to do, they've cleaned up the majority of the debris that was on our grounds, the debris cleanup and anything that was damaged will be collected and gathered, that is the one thing we will be using FEMA for, we will work through our county emergency management in order to make that happen, probably our biggest losses were when we lost power, and Dr. Harold will get into some of the specifics, and maybe Dr. Lewis on a lot of our electronics, as I shared earlier, our feed for the video in this building was, for lack of a better term, fried when the power went off and things went down, we lost a large number of cameras and other computer equipment across the district that we're still assessing, and then finally, the majority of our food and all of our freezers, with the exception of maybe four school buildings, it might have been five, the refrigerators and the freezers on the front end of the storm, Dr. Harold, myself, and anybody we could get from operations and around, we went to the southern end of the county and were able to clean out a lot of our perishable food, which we donated to the shelters, one of the things that I learned from this hurricane, and unfortunately, it being my third, I thought I knew everything, it's not declared an emergency until the hurricane hits land, that's defined by the front edge of the I, we were about 20 hours into it when that took place out on the coast, so Red Cross, the Salvation Army, a lot of those places weren't allowed to get out and do a lot of things, so we had shelters without food, we actually fed the majority of the shelters the first two days, then on the backside, I think we started Sunday and Monday and went around dump truck and trash trucks, because three or four days without power, we had a lot of ruined food, so we cleaned all that out, things that's federal, it comes from them, we'll get credit for, the others, we will be turning in on our insurance, the good news is, we have one deductible for the entire county, it doesn't go school by school, so that's the great news, so we have one deductible, but we have a tremendous, that's why I say I don't have, as we write this up, I'll get it to you in email form, we're working through diligently, but just going around and checking the cameras and all of the computer equipment's been quite time consuming, and the folks are going through all of our purchase orders and what we had in the freezers and refrigerators, on the front of the hurricane, we took very good notes of what we took out and were giving to the shelters, afterwards, when you're in dealing with spoiled food, it was all hands on deck, get it out of there as quick as we could, so we're going back through a lot of our purchase orders to get that information. We are, as you are aware, back to school, we've had some air quality samples done at some different buildings, areas where we knew we had some water in, we're doing some more sampling, some of the biggest issues when the air handlers are down for a couple, three, four days without power, you get a lot of must and mildo, and we, our folks have really, I have to say, done a fabulous job going in and getting those things cleaned up, and the filters turned back on, and where we've seen issues, we're getting in and getting the air qualities done, so we know everything's safe.
All right.
And I, I know you have some of the specifics on some of the others.
Dr. Dunsmore did an awesome job, our crew, just so you're aware, maintenance began working Sunday afternoon after the, it was safe to get on the road once the event happened, so maintenance worked nonstop Sunday afternoon through Thursday of the week that we were closed, many times they worked well after their, our normal close of business day, so the guys and ladies worked really hard, our first attempt, obviously, was to make sure that we removed anything that could have been a danger to our children and our staff, because of course, our goal was obviously to get us back up and running as quickly as we could and safely as we could to get back in school, it did take two days for us to receive food, not a lot of people think about how long it takes to get food back into our freezers and our coolers, we had two shipments over two separate days, because a lot of our food suppliers were dealing with the same thing in other districts, they lost food as well, so they had to kind of ration where their food was going to go. The biggest impact we've had so far, looking at our damages, we did have leaks in several of our roofs, but a lot of our roof leaks were situations where you had 75 mile power wind gusts blowing water into places that we probably will never see it again, transition areas coming through windows, under doors, classrooms have outside doors, we began immediately with that on Sunday afternoon, starting to clean that up, we, our maintenance men fixed our roof Sunday afternoon at Goldsboro High School, to make sure there was no additional damage, because we still had chances of rain, also, as Dr. Dunsmore pointed out, when we were moving food, we had a lot of people that came out, including Mr. West, to help us while the storm was going on, we had classified employees to come out, cafeteria managers, custodians, operation men, in our t-shirts and jeans, trying to get stuff moved, because we knew we wouldn't lose it while the storm was actually still in the area, so a lot of people pulled together, it was really, it was really instrumental for our people to pull together in the way they did as a family, to make sure everything was done, what we needed to do to serve people, Dr. Dunsmore did mention that also our food that we had left was donated to Duke Lynn County around Chicki Pen, because we had word, when we were done with our food, that they were really struggling and had shelters that had no food, because that area was hit really, really hard, as Dr. Dunsmore said, our brothers and sisters to the south, and school business and things like that, major things we're dealing with right now is, of course, as Dr. Dunsmore elaborated on, our camera systems, we have about 70 cameras that are down, and lost three servers for cameras due to electronic issues, we lost the energy management software at Thomas Road Elementary School to control our HVAC system, so we're working on that, to get that back up, the air conditioning is running, but we've lost the ability to set set points until we get that management system back, also, we had a chiller situation at Spring Creek High, because of the power fluctuations of being out, we lost some compressors there for that, so that's about a $14,000 repair, but that's up and running, so HVAC really worked hard to make sure our stuff was brought back up, because many of our schools lost power for two to three days, so one of the things we first did when it was brought back up, to try to get everything back up and running, to assess where we had problems, have those things done, so we are in the process now of gathering what the final total will be, of what our repairs look like, and what we spent on everything from ceiling tiles to compressors and switches that we know were down, to compile that for Dr. Dunsmore, for our insurance purposes, as well as to provide that to the states, we'll have that to you as quickly as we can.
Dr. Harold, I'd like to ask you a question, we had some concerns about Southern Wayne and mold prior to the storm, what is that situation now, since we were closed for so long before, and I assume that they lost power as well?
Yes, ma'am, they did, they lost power shortly after we actually went and removed the food from the freezer, we've walked all of our buildings, Southern Wayne looks fine, we had an air quality study done at Southern Wayne prior to the storm coming in, the reports there from the air quality study, I'm happy to share with you, was there was nothing in the building that would cause any health issues, the biggest concern we had was we needed to make sure we provided some cleaning aspects to the building in certain areas, which we're looking into at this point in time, I've actually been to that building twice, once with Mr. Smith, Southern Wayne sustained more damage in their mobile units, because we need roofs on those mobile units, and as soon as we had the damage inside the mobile units, we had our carpenters and maintenancemen there, and they've repaired ceilings to those mobile units to make sure they're safe for children, so one of the things that we stressed was at no point in time are we going to put children or our staff in any building or any room that we did not feel like they were safe. When you look at buildings that maybe sustained the most damage, Rosewood Middle had a lot of water that blew in through the old windows, nothing more through the windows than it did from the roofs, so we've got that as nearly as possible, Goldsboro High had some leaks, we had a situation at Goldsboro High where the roof drains became stopped up with the debris, and then the water backed up, 27 inches of measurable rain, and ran over the flashing down one of the firewalls within the building, so there's a room there that we're probably will have to remove the tile off of the floor, if you've not been able to get up with, it's because I've been out in the buildings most just about every day since Sunday, just assessing our buildings and our grounds, we are still having some trees removed, shrubbery, things that blew over, so we're working in that process, that's still going on, we'll have a total for that, as Dr. Dunsmore said, that FEMA can help us with that, we also had a couple fences that blew down just from the wind, chain link fences from the gust, and we've already been on top of standing that back up as well.
Okay, any questions regarding the update on facilities?
If I could, I would just really like to say thank you to all the maintenance, operations, transportation, they, they really worked very hard, literally starting Sunday afternoon, to check out our buildings and make sure everything was ready for our staff, so we were out there some days in our shorts and t-shirts trying to help, but maintenance and operations were working every day trying to get this stuff back, so they did an awesome job, and our custodial staff, custodial staff came in and did what they had to do, to try and get water and things up off the floor and get our students back in, so just wanted to put that out there for them.
Okay.
Yeah, we even had our upper, at one point, as most of you know, we had a number of shelters that were open in our schools, several of them lost power, and they were moving people around shelters, to the point, myself and two operations guys, that we got them out there with our box truck, we removed things over at School Street in case we had to move an entire shelter over there, just to be prepared because of losing, not having power when it's hot, when there's a lot of people crowded in there, it wasn't real good situations.
Okay, any other questions regarding facilities? If not, we will move on to a update on Southern Wayne Gym.
And I can start there, Dr. Harold, we have, the pre-bid meeting is Friday, October 12th, 10:00 AM, is that time right? I didn't write the time down, the actual bid opening will be November 8th, and then we will move from there.
Dr. Harold, do you have anything to add, or regarding that?
No, ma'am, right now, the process has been, has been moving along, the last thing that the site engineers are working on is the driveway diagrams to the school, because the driveway, for those of you that have been around the back of the school, the driveway that comes in about between the tennis courts and the buses will need to be widened to at least a three turn lane for that, so that's the last thing, right now, that the civil site engineers are working on, the plans for the gym are finished, and right now, the classroom should be finished as well, so the civil site was the last, so I did have an email last week asking for our surveyor to have a few more survey points taken as you exit Southern Wayne High School, that back lot, taking a left, to potentially look at some storm drain tie-ins, if you're familiar with that property, there's some storm drains that are right behind the buses, and they tie and go to the front, so we wanted to see how that would impact, and see if we need to attach some storm drain there as well.
All right, any questions? Thank you very much, Dr., oh, yes, Mr. Henderson, that was a slow move.
Now, I hear what the pre-bid, pre-
Now, I hear what the pre-bid, pre-bid meeting is October the twelfth.
At ten a.m.
Ten a.m.
And now, does that mean that the bid would have already gone out? Or is that, that preliminary, and then the bid will go out?
They come in and get the, so we'll send notice out. We've already started sending them out for that meeting. And then they come and gather all the information and ask questions, those that are going to bid on it. So you've already put together the right paper?
We have the legal notice ready. We're required to put forth the legal notice. So we have that legal notice ready to be distributed. And then, as Dr. Dunsmore had stated, on the twelfth will be when those contractors, those general contractors that wish to bid on that project, will come and have an opportunity to ask questions about the project and what they're bidding on. That usually lasts about thirty minutes, depending on how many questions they have. From that point, the bidding is officially opened. And then the, as far as the timeframe or timeline. And then we'll close the bids on the eighth at two p.m., I believe it is. They have to be in place by two p.m.
You said November eighth?
Yes, sir, November eighth at two p.m. here in Conference Room C. Both meetings will be in Conference Room C, Mr. Flowers.
Okay, any other questions?
Other questions?
All right. Under the board action, I think we need to, I don't know if we need to pull that. Are we going to put on all these at one time?
I was going to make a motion to approve all the different minutes at one time.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. At this time, we are going to approve, we've approved the agenda, so now we are looking at the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items B, C, D, E, and F.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, approving the minutes of the various meetings as indicated? Please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Strickland, you want to make a statement? Because I did address that.
Mr. Strickland.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Mr. Burden.
Madam Chair, on the closed session minutes, will you please take a motion on whether they remain closed or not?
All right.
I did not notice any student or personnel information, so should I restate it as I make a motion that all the closed?
Did you notice any attorney-client privileged information?
I didn't notice any. I would like to, can I amend the motion or make a second motion?
And you can make a second motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a second motion to release the closed session minutes of the items C and E. To release.
I need a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand.
Wait, wait just a second. So I, I didn't have access to that. We didn't have access to the.
This is it. There is a student's name on it, or is it not a student or something?
Where, which one?
Are they only minutes?
Jasmine.
I didn't see them. Okay, which meeting is that? Then I missed that when I read.
Why don't, why don't you keep them closed?
I'll give them up.
We'll just keep them closed, and then we can review them, and if they can then be opened up, we will open them up.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, then I amend my motion to keep closed session minutes under C and E closed.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Now, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I do want to make reference to the closed session minutes that we had on August twenty-seventh. I, and it is noted in the minutes that I have made a request for job descriptions of our custodial staff, and I have nev, I have yet to receive, so I won't.
They just came in an email.
They sent you an email.
They just sent them, because I was trying to tell you that I had spoken with him, because I think that is, that was the open board meeting for the same night, August twenty-seventh. And so he was going to send them out to us.
Well, Madam Chair, in future, I would like to request that as soon as requests and stuff are made, that we be more prompt in our deliverance.
All right. Okay. So I still need to.
Send everyone to.
Okay, there is no vote, is there? Because he was just making a discussion.
Yeah, making a comment.
All right, and we're now under, we have the North Carolina School Board Association Board of Directors nominations. Dr. Dunsmore?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will take nominations if anybody would like to nominate somebody to serve in that capacity.
I'd like to make the nomination.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Patricia Burden.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to nominate a board member, Jennifer Strickland.
I appreciate that, Mr. Flowers, but I'm actually going to second Ms. Burden's nomination.
We needed three.
Oh, no, 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 this is something different from that.
Stand corrected.
But thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, I move that the nomination be closed on the said name.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are ready to vote?
You made a second of this motion.
Jennifer Strickland.
Jennifer Strickland.
Second.
Strickland.
Uh-huh, okay.
Oh, the close? Do you have to second the closing of the nomination?
He just nominated, it wasn't a motion.
Okay.
But I made a motion to close it on that one said name. Second the motion.
Then you second the motion to close.
Second?
All right. Any discussion?
So we have one nomination, Ms. Patricia Burden, and I will get that information, Ms. Burden, if you're willing to accept that nomination, I will make sure that's sent in.
Yes, I am willing to accept the nomination.
Hold on one second.
Okay, we need to vote.
So you had a motion to close, you had a second on the motion to close, you did not have a vote on the motion to close.
That's right.
So is everybody ready to close?
Are we, all right. If you are ready to close, indicate by raising your right hand. All right. Any? Disagreement? No? Okay. So we closed the motion. Do we now have to vote on the nomination?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I need a motion to vote on the nomination.
You have a motion and a second, you just need to vote on the nomination.
All right.
One clarification.
I thought that when we took, when I made the motion for it to go on the said name, we were actually voting on that at that time.
Okay, I took that as a motion to close with just the one name. So I would just call for a vote on the nomination, if you will, please.
Okay, do I need another motion?
You don't. You had a motion for the nomination and a second for the nomination, so just a vote.
All right, now we need to vote on the nomination. All in favor of Patricia Burden representing us on the North Carolina School Board Association?
Board of Directors. The Board of Directors.
Board of Directors.
Okay.
Please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. And now we are on revised resolution?
Yep.
I need a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the resolution approving financing terms. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. The consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before moving to the consent agenda, I think it'd be wise for you to bring up that, the issue about the delegates at State Convention.
All right.
We still have Adam As for the meeting change as well.
Yeah, we've got to do the meeting change first. I is the changing of the meeting from three, from meeting for closed session to begin at three-thirty rather than three o'clock p.m. We are willing to try this for a while, and as long as it works out, then it seems to be beneficial for everyone involved. So I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we change our official meeting time to start at three-thirty.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, for matter of clarity for the public, our official meeting is five o'clock.
You're absolutely correct, but the meeting for the board to go into closed session, yes, sir.
And we're not changing our public board meeting time. It remains five o'clock. All right, we ready for the vote? All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Now, I don't have it on the agenda to discuss it.
But you had voted up.
Yes. But I would say that our state conference for the North Carolina Board of, School Board Association will be during the month of November eleventh through the fourteenth. And we are required to have delegates, three delegates and an alternate. And our delegates are members of the board who are planning to attend and have agreed to serve. And that was Mrs. Jennifer Strickland, Mr. Christopher West, Mr. Rick Pridgen. All right. Now, do we have to vote on that?
If they've already, if they're going and if they're willing to serve, then I think that that's fine. It sounds like it was an announcement.
Now, Mr. Henderson, you were not here at that time.
I'm fine with it.
But are, but are you going?
I'm going.
Okay. So I want, but I want you to know that I've listed you and I as alternate, just in case something happens and someone cannot attend, and then you and I can debate.
Okay.
Rocks, paper, scissors?
Yes. All right, the consent agenda for open session. Are there any concerns? Because we vote on this in one, one vote? All right.
I just got one question.
Yes.
Madam Chair, with items H and I, since that's the first reading, would that come back to us again?
Yes, it will.
Yes, sir.
H and I will come back. But we're approving them as they are listed there. All right, I need a motion to approve, to approve the consent calendar, I mean consent vote, consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, board comments?
Madam Chair, may I interrupt one second? I just wanted to give one point of interest for the board members, if you would be interested. Our Southeast Rees has been working with numerous state officials. And just to give you an idea how lucky we were, the estimate of the following counties is what they know now, because DPI only has two adjusters. Craven County is at a tad over seven million dollars in damage. Duplin County, three point five million. Jones County is at thirteen million seventeen. They've lost two school buildings that they are not going to be reopening. Lenore County is at about nine hundred thousand. New Hanover County at eight million. And here's the leader, Onslow County, a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, and they're expecting that to double.
Did they lose seven schools?
They're not sure. They, their forty buildings, they all received some level of damage. Several had significant structural damage, and there are seven buildings that are in jeopardy that they may not be able to save. Pamlico County is at one point five million. Pender County, eight point five million. Sampson, two hundred and twenty-five. We're estimating our damages at right around four hundred thousand till we get down to the nitty-gritty. As we just turned this in, actually, this evening, this goes to the, this went to the State House and Senate. One of the things that we are asking, and I want to go in the record, is that they forgive all of the days out. Now, we are trying to make up some student days for instruction, but my more, bigger concern is for our staff, because we have a lot of the staff that may or may not be able to make up those times. So we are imploring to them that they give us those ten days in return that our staff won't be losing pay. So that's important, and that's going to be out into, and there'll be a group of us that are going to be working with the General Assembly to see that through.
All right. Mrs. Lynn Henderson, any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just did not want it to go without notice that we have, that Dr. Cynthia Reynolds has left Wayne County Public Schools and gone to Mecklenburg or Gaston County. I wanted to personally thank her for all the work that she has done. She has been very helpful to me in many of the situations that I caught myself in. So I just wanted to say that I am very sorry that we lost such a good employee.
All right, Mr. Pridgen?
Madam Chair, we had, we had a lot of great volunteers in the county during the, during the storm. And a lot of people that left their own families to go work in shelters and work in other capacity and that type of thing. I'd just like to say thank you, because there's a lot of people in this county that are still suffering and be suffering for a long time. And, and a lot of those people helped, gave up, sacrificed for being away with their own families to help other people. And I think it's very admirable of them. We're very fortunate to have that kind of camaraderie in our county, you know, where people do care about other people. Been to the fair. I'll say it's a great, you need to go through the student exhibits at the, at the fair. And you need to look at everything that they've done and the artwork and all of that. I mean, it speaks very well of our schools and the talent. I was blown away by some of the pencil drawings that some of our students had done there. And I, I think, I hope people will go out and support the competitions that are coming up and some that's already been. But it's, it's fun time at the fair, but you better have your pocketbook ready when you go. But anyway, that, that's that. And, and I would tell, I would tell students, if you're not registered to vote, you need to register to vote. And anybody, you need to register to vote. And there were booths out at the fair that were also passing out voter registration forms and things of that nature. And, and I think that, I think that they, everybody wants a current eighteen, they're right, I would encourage them to do so. We have an upcoming election, and there's a lot of critical things that are on the ballot this, this session, especially with the General Assembly and that type of thing. And we do have, we do, we are supporting as a board the quarter cent sales tax. And I think that that's drastically needed for our schools. And we have paid seven point two-five percent in this county before. And so quarter cent sales tax is much needed for our school's construction. Thank you.
There were some signs on the way to the central office today, some small signs that says, "Vote yes on one-fourth cent tax." Was that from our county commissioners? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I've had a lot of people ask me about that.
Yeah, because they're so small and they didn't say. And then we, I think there's something on the state ballot about taxes.
There's six amendments on the state.
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was a sign for us.
Actually, the sign says at the bottom, sponsored by the Wayne County Democratic, I mean Republican Party.
Oh, it does?
I think you're right. It's sponsored by the Republican Party.
Not the county commissioners, okay. All right, Mrs. Strickland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to start out by simply just echoing everything Mr. Pridgen said about all the hard work that was put in by our emergency service people in the county, by everyone within the school district. Thank you for everything you did. I'm not going to go through and repeat it all. But there's no way to repay you, and we greatly appreciate it. Also, they wanted to take the time to thank our local representatives. I know that I spoke with our Representative Dixon about a week and a half ago, and he's like, "I can't talk, I'm trying to help Duplin County." Then when I talked to him a little bit later, and I spoke with John Bell as well, it was tomorrow, I was told, is when they're supposed to be putting up the bill for the forgiveness of days. And at this point, they're looking at no resistance. That doesn't mean that somebody won't sneeze and it changed tomorrow. So we should be in good shape, so continuing to pray for that one. Also, during the whole time that the schools and the EOS are in the middle of the storm, so were our local representatives, but they also had things going on at home. So thank you for their time volunteering. I'm not going to share everything that I know on that, but just still prayers for all of them. And everybody needs to go out to the fair. If y'all don't understand how much work goes into getting those art projects pulled together and the musical projects and the talent show, you don't really get it. Our students and our teachers were in for about two weeks before they were out. And our teachers and our coaches were still able to pull off, getting ready for the cheerleading competition, getting the artwork into the fair. So thank you to all of you for what you've done. We greatly appreciate it. That's all.
Okay. Okay. To our attorney, any comments?
Just that it's an honor to serve this board. Thank you for allowing us to do that.
Thank you. Mr. West?
I don't have any comments, Madam Chair.
Mr. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I went out to the fair on Saturday night and I thank myself and everybody in the joint in 10 counties was out there. So, successful fair.
I think we're happy about that.
Thursday afternoon at 4:30, my granddaughter's going to be singing. I just guess y'all want to know. If I'm alive and breathing, ain't bleeding too bad. I plan to be there. But, and Dr. Harold, I hope you're all in practice as you're doing for Dancing with the Stars is not going to hold up our Southern Wayne project. I've been there and done that and that's quite a commitment. So, those are my comments, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Smith?
First and foremost, I want to, to give thanks for the efforts put forth by Dr. Dunsmore and his staff, keeping us posted during the hurricane about what was going on with our schools, what was going on with, in our communities. I commend you all for that. That was, that was tremendous. I, you know, in a former life, I used to, all right now. In a former life, I would have been out there with you, but I certainly, in my role as Director of Transportation, I certainly know how important it is to ride those roads and get out there and get your feet wet and get dirty and, and try to figure out what's going on. So, again, I commend you for your efforts. Also, want to point out that, like Mr. Pridgen, this is voting time. Early voting starts October 17th through November 3rd. The election day will be actual November 6th. There are a lot of things on the ballot regardless of your political position. I think it's important that everybody gets out and votes. I know that I've read several studies that situations like our hurricane can impact voter turnout. It's already a midterm, which typically is known for low voter turnout, but we're talking also about this hurricane and people still being displaced and all kinds of things that could prevent individuals from getting out to vote, but certainly exercise your constitutional right to do so. And lastly, I want to say to all of my good friends, whether we see each other again.
Yes, we will see each other.
One more time in November?
Yes.
Okay, one more time in November.
May even be this.
We've got an October meeting.
Yeah, we got another meeting. So, anyway, just good luck to everyone going forward and thank you for what you do.
Mr. Smith took my comments, but that's all right. I want to, to thank not only Dr. Dunsmore and his leadership team, but Dr. Harold and all of the people from Transportation and Operations, the managers that, cafeteria managers and school custodians that came in and worked in the buildings. And I truly appreciate the fact that we responded quickly, that we were able to assist the Salvation Army in serving the people in the shelters. And yes, there were a lot of community people that were out. Goldsboro really got a lot of news, got a lot of attention on the news during this storm. And many of our churches, I think Nahana donated 10 hogs and the churches were cooking them and preparing them for distribution to the people in the shelters. And so, that was wonderful. I appreciate the constant updates given to us by Dr. Dunsmore and Mr. Dirksen, keeping us informed. We were able to answer questions if we needed to do so. And it kept us posted in order to keep parents posted about the schools. I thought one of not, well, one of the better things that was done was the fact of keeping, giving parents a 48-hour response. It just wasn't overnight at the last minute. They had some days and times to prepare for whatever they needed to prepare for. We will all wish Mrs., Dr. Reynolds well in her new job. I believe that's Gaston? Yes, in Gaston. She will be working in their central office and we wish her well. She left just at the storm, I think, so we didn't get a chance, some of us did not get a chance to officially say farewell, but we thank her for the work that she's done in Wayne County Public Schools. And I want you to know that I hired her as a teacher at Goldsboro High School when she first returned to Wayne County. And I also put her name on a list to be considered as an administrator after she first came to Wayne County. So, we wish her well. Dr. Dunsmore, yours.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who was out there and helping. It was, it was tough. We had a lot of cafeteria people out. It was easy to see their passion about their job when they're opening up refrigerators and freezers and typically the smell hits you first.